Southwest Florida, welcome to Lead Pits Live. We're here at Mount Hermit Ministries covering some of the political issues that are taking place with politicians are all over Southwest Florida. You see the signs everywhere, "Vote for me, vote for me, vote for me, and I'll set you free." Well, we have a fantastic candidate here. Get a chance to meet her. She's running for Ward 6 for the City of Fort Myers City Council, Gerald Raldo. First name Diana. Did I do okay?
You did pretty good.
Welcome to Lead Pits Live.
Thank you so much for having me here, Lee.
And this is not your first time on the show. Tell people you're on the show in the past. What did you talk about before?
Talked about bicycle infrastructure and the importance for that for our economic development and our social development and making us a prosperous city.
Right, and so when you were leading the charge on that, some great things came as a result of that. I would think that as a result of you being actively involved with the development of the city and how safety was handled for bicyclists, that may have been a part of the whole process about you just want to be involved with what's going on and make a difference. Is that fair to say?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Our adequate infrastructure is so important for us. So when we talk about traffic and we talk about connectivity and when we talk about safety, the safety of the community, our children, just the perfect example, how do our children access the schools? Can they walk safely if they live less than two miles away? So to me, that's super important. But you know, when we get older, how are we settling our lifestyles? Are we able to drive everywhere? Probably not. Can we walk? Absolutely. Can we bicycle? Absolutely. We have to have the right infrastructure and we have to take care of our people.
The City of Fort Myers, what's your overall opinion about our city?
I see a lot of opportunity. I see a bright future and that's what excites me so much. And I am very connected with people. Like I have one-on-one conversations because it's about building those relationships. So I can see how when we support each other as a community without a special interest, when we really speak for what we absolutely need, we can do amazing things. So I see a lot of opportunity. I see a lot of hope and I see a bright light ahead and that's one of the motivators for me to run for city council.
What else inspired you to run for city council?
You know, I have the background, the skills. I'm an architect and an urban designer and I have a master's in management. I used to work for the city. I worked there for eight years. So I can understand the planning part of the city, the inside of the city, the city operations in a depth that nobody else is running for city council in my world or any of the other worlds has.
That's Ward 6.
That's Ward 6, absolutely.
Now, you're running as a Democrat?
I am running, so the City of Fort Myers is a nonpartisan race.
But you are a Democrat.
And I am registered as a Republican.
Okay.
Yep. And so the City of Fort Myers is a nonpartisan race. So anyone that's registered to vote can vote in the City of Fort Myers elections in the primary that are coming up on August 18th.
Okay. Now, when they vote on August 18th for Diana, what will they be getting?
Well, I have over 20 years of experience in the public and private sector. I am super committed to this community. I have been working in a lot of different organizations and causes since 2006. I'm always super engaged in the community. So I'm now doing things now to make it appealing, like look, this is what I'm doing for the city. I have always been super involved. So I will give 100% to the City of Fort Myers, to the residents and you know, all the resources that we have to make a prosperous city.
Let's get to know you as a person. We heard about your educational background in architect, I think you said the word, but just in general, who are you? Who are you as a person?
So I am a super, I love connecting with people. I love this community. I am always super positive about change. I'm always about all coming together, building things better, looking at all the possibilities that we have. And I always give myself like 100% to everything I do. So the community will be getting me 100%, but this is the other thing. Genuinely speaking, I took on myself, I loaned myself the money to run this campaign without any special interest. So that's what, a very important thing that the community will get from me. And here's why. There is an arranged system in this community where it's sad because it's a small community. It's 100,000 people, you know, roughly, and we have people that want to control the council. So they put massive amounts of money. So if you get mailers and all these things that are super shiny and are trying to impact you, are you really getting what you need from that politician to represent you? And that's one of the things that I bring to the equation that is completely different. I am genuinely here representing the community of Ward 6.
You see yourself as a grassroots politician?
Yes, absolutely.
A person of the people?
Of the people. And guess what? The first Latina to ever run for city council. We have almost 30% Latinos in the City of Fort Myers that are not being represented. So I am unique in that sense and I'm bilingual. We don't have anyone in council that is bilingual.
Diversity is very important to you. We have, now the City of Fort Myers is a majority minority city. The majority of the people in the City of Fort Myers are minorities. Things have changed now. What are you hearing as you move around in the community on social media as you're launching, as you're working through your campaign? Are you feeling that energy around the whole idea of change?
Oh, yes, and it's amazing. And here's one thing. So I have been part of the Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee for the mayor's office and a lot of things came from that. But when I'm out there talking to people, people are seeking change and they're seeking that relationship with us. They're seeking, they're so excited to talk to someone that doesn't want a transaction. They want someone real that is really willing to do something. They want diversity. They want representation. And I think that's super important. I think these elections are going to be completely different than all the past elections in the city for that matter.
Now, you said that for the most part, the City of Fort Myers political system, politicians are the good old boy system funded by special interests and so on like and so forth. And that's not where you want to be. You said you also are funding your own campaign. Who are the types of people who you want to donate to you? You still need money to run a successful campaign. Tell us how you're going about getting that money.
So it's been a lot of one-on-one connections with people that know me and trust me and people, those people connecting me to other people, small businesses that want to support me and people that I have met in my life here in the United States that know what I have to bring to the equation and they might be living in other areas, but they're super supportive of it. So that has been successful. It's building that network and those relationships because they truly believe in what I can bring to the table.
When you say that, you know, people are controlled and you made some comments around the money and how saying people control it, everything, are you saying that there's some corruption in the City of Fort Myers politics?
It's very possible. I have witnessed some of the things that have happened during council meetings and I, you know, their question and we bluntly, our electoral officials are ignoring it and they move on. They're not listening to the advisory committees that the city has and they move on. All of these things happen and they move on. And here are some of the perfect examples. We have, we have this system of endorsements and so it's like this shiny star that we get, the little smiley face like we're in kindergarten. But I'm going to tell you here that not all endorsements are the same. And when we, I was told for one endorsement, you have the experience, the background and the qualifications, but we're choosing someone completely different because there's a lot of money backing that campaign and we want that person to win. So we're picking leadership experience and skills or we're picking money so we can manipulate and control what happens in the city council and that is not okay.
Now, the City of Fort Myers has a weak mayor system. They have a strong, the city manager runs the city. Each city council member has one vote and of course, the mayor has the tie-breaking vote with the seven people sitting there on the dais. You will have one vote, but you will need to influence other people to think your way and vote your way on certain policies that you want to see implemented. Tell us in your background, how have you been able to win friends, build consensus and influence people to see things your way?
So here's the thing, the one unique thing that I bring to the equation, as I mentioned, I worked for the city for eight years in the Community Development Department. So I understand a lot of the operations of the city. So people, I ask people, pick a subject and ask me a question. I might not know everything and I might not have the solution to everything, but I can bring an educated decision on how we could work because a lot of our problems are based on our system and our policy that hasn't been changed because you know, why change it? We've been doing this for 100 years and that's a disservice to all of us. So those relationships, those conversations have really shifted. People have looked and said, oh, yeah, you bring a lot to the table. You have a lot to address some of the systemic issues. So we start putting Band-Aids on specific situations and really go to the policy and fix things from the root. And I think that has been a very strong point for my campaign.
What have you done in Ward 6 thus far, so far? What have you worked on?
Well, you know, as part of the initiatives with my nonprofit Streets Alive of Southwest Florida, we have been super engaged in the connectivity of having multi-use paths and sidewalks. So I get very engaged with the Metropolitan Planning Organization and they have an advisory committee that is for bicyclists and pedestrians specifically. So we have audited some areas of Ward 6 and with those audits, we have successfully been pushing for the building, the construction of a multi-use paths on Six Mile Cypress, connecting children and people in the community with resources, with schools, with shopping centers, you know, right on Six Mile Cypress, Palomino Lane, you know, that's two-lane road and they didn't have a sidewalk or a multi-use path and you have Paseo and Reflection House communities back there and they didn't have those resources. So I have been a long-term advocate for the infrastructure and those things have happened. It took five years to make them happen, but that's my commitment to the community is right there. I have proven leadership.
What has been the response from the community to your efforts to get that done?
Oh, my God, it has been so great. When I've been walking around, it's interesting because people recognize that I'm the person that advocated for that to happen and that's so beautiful. And when I run, I'm a runner, so I go through those paths and run and wave at people and people stop and they want to have a conversation. The resilience that it takes to stay engaged in the system and make things happen. So to me, that's so fulfilling, so absolutely fulfilling.
There are numerous people who are running for political office right now for the city council and for the mayor of the City of Fort Myers. Have you gotten a chance to, particularly with the candidates, do you have any particular candidate that sees things the way that you see them as it relates to the three candidates who are running for mayor? What's your thoughts about them?
I have had, fortunately, I have had contact with all of them, you know, because I'm involved in the community, I have had contact with all of them. Jacqueline McMillan, I had said to her one day, I say, I know you from somewhere. Interestingly enough, we went through our master's program together. And so I have been able to find some common ground in a lot of different things with all of them, but if I wanted to pick somebody, that's going to be a secret. I'll tell you after the primaries.
Oh, okay. So I thought you called Jacqueline McMillan's name, so I thought you were going to go down that road, but I won't press you on that. When people go into the polling booths or fill out their mail-in ballots and they see your name there, candidate Diana Giraldo, Giraldo, and they decide that they want to check for you for Ward 6, what are they going to get?
Well, they're going to get the first Latina ever elected for city council, someone that's fully representing them, the community. I put 100% in everything I do. I'm enthusiastic, I'm dynamic, I have proven my leadership skills, I'm committed and I absolutely love Fort Myers. So they get all that. They get a relationship with me. I don't expect people, as me being the councilperson, to follow me around. I want to go to them. I want to build relationships and I want us to find solutions together so the city also can benefit from that. When we all work together, we can do amazing things. So that's what they will get from me.
Give me two ways people can get in touch with you. I know you're on Facebook. Do you have a website, phone number, email address? Give me some ways people can connect with you and get involved with your campaign.
So people can go on my website is Diana4Ward6.com. There is a link there because I'm always listening. So there is a link there and they can click there and they can send me an email. I answer absolutely all of the emails personally.
I know you do.
Yes, personally. They can go on my Facebook page. They can also look me as Diana4Ward6 on Facebook and they can send me messages. They can check out all my posts. They're very real. They can share them with everybody and most importantly, they can cast their vote for me.
You mentioned a couple of three times that you are Latino. As a Latino sitting on the city council for the City of Fort Myers, what does that say about sensitivity and awareness that you would bring to the deliberation process?
Well, you know, perspective, perspective. If there is one thing that I have learned from being in a melting pot of different cultures in this area is bringing the perspective. Everybody's perspective is so very important for us to move forward. Everybody's perspective is so important for us to find solutions. So I think that that perspective is very important for our social interaction and our economic development. And also being able to bring a different opinions, bring a lot of sensitive subjects forward so we can overcome them and heal from them. It's something that we really haven't had because we've never had a Latino in office.
The City of Fort Myers voted not, the city council that is, not to mandate mask mandatory in the City of Fort Myers. What's your thoughts about that and do you agree with it?
So here's the thing, it's very hard to manage it and so I can understand how managing a mandate is very hard. However, leaving the businesses alone to try to control this is also an issue. So my stand on this has been from day one, it's about social responsibility. I have been wearing a mask since day one. I advise people to wear a mask if they are going to be, you know, with other groups of people, if they're going to be in private. But for us to have that social responsibility because I care about people and that's my stand on it. And I also care about the businesses and the people that work in these businesses that are suffering because we have not been able to get our economy back on. So I call about social responsibility and just being able to move forward, all of us.
Black Lives Matter protests, no justice, no peace, all around the country for that matter. Here locally, there are some protests that have taken place mainly aimed at police brutality, lack of sensitivity towards the disenfranchised and so on and so forth, all stealing from George Floyd, I can't breathe. What's your thoughts about protests and their importance to the City of Fort Myers?
Here's something in contrast, very important. So I find that it's very healthy that we can all express ourselves and that we do it in a way where our voices are being heard without causing issues that will affect us like our safety or anything like that. I believe that we have the liberty to express ourselves organically. And this is the contrast. When we go, when you see city council, when there is city council meetings happening and people organize themselves, I see in the non, there's organized people. They come and wear shirts. They don't have to be of any racial background, but there is a difference in how people are being treated and how they organize themselves based on the color. And I have seen that. I have witnessed that. So we have to really allow for all of us to have the opportunity to express ourselves and come to the table to find solution. Better communication, transparency and working with the community, I think, will help all of these movements be prosperous in a very healthy way.
Is that a way of saying that you support the Black Lives Matter movement?
I support the healthy parts of it and here's why. There are, there are people in the community that take advantage of that to try to cause unrest.
They have a group called the Peaceful Protest of Southwest Florida or Lee County, Peaceful Protest Group. You're familiar with them?
I am not.
Okay, let's move on. The Chief of Police Derrick Diggs, City of Fort Myers, African-American. What's your overall thoughts about the job that he's done?
Well, you know, I believe that there has been a lot of shifts in the City of Fort Myers Police Department with all the restructuring. I think that it's always opportunity for growth and obviously, given the, a lot of the issues that have happened in our country this year, he's been able to do an effective job at keeping the City of Fort Myers safe. So there is a lot to say about that. However, there is always room for growth, for organization and doing a better job so we can connect better with the community.
You mentioned growth. I want to go down that road for a minute. A person like yourself is certainly watching growth as you're so environmentally sensitive, biking trails and a whole lot of other things. You will be deliberating, your main ward is Ward 6, but you'll be voting on things all over the City of Fort Myers. And of course, there's a lot of growth that's being planned, midtown development, downtown Fort Myers, just outside the River District. Many people are concerned about gentification, moving into the low-income communities, namely the Donbar community and rent's going up and people can't afford to live in the area. That's a lot, but let me go step by step. First of all, are you in favor of growth and in what way?
Well, growth is inevitable. That will happen and in reality, government does not have the ability to mandate what happens with private property as long as it's aligned with policy. So there's policy there to support growth and it will happen. However, we need to be mindful not to put the seat before the horse. And what that means is that we have to make sure that we have the infrastructure there that the growth will need for us not to have inefficiencies in water, you know, water infrastructure and other infrastructure like cycling and pedestrian infrastructure. And I said that because that really has affected some of the communities where growth has been pushed and now we're having other issues. It takes for the community to rise up and voice their opinion and discontent for the city to do something. We have to be more reactive, more proactive rather than reactive, addressing the growth.
Affordable housing, what's your thoughts?
Well, you know, I am super involved in affordable housing in my private practice and we need more and we need more of that in the City of Fort Myers. And here's the thing, we have to support that diversity and where we place affordable housing and being able to have it in the city. Because when you push people to the suburbs and they get affordable housing there, now they're bound to buy a car, right? So now they have to have a car note and insurance so they can commute. And so now they're saving money if they're living in the suburbs and in affordable housing complex, but now they have transportation issues. So we have to really mindful not to push people away from the city. And one example is, we don't even have to talk about necessarily people that are not making a lot of money to survive, you know? But we talk about our teachers and even the people that work for the City of Fort Myers. Most of them don't live in the city because they can't afford to live in the city.
Where is Ward 6?
Ward 6, so the main access of Ward 6 is Colonial Boulevard between the plantation area and State Road 82, along Six Mile Cypress and the Tree Line Corridor, the Forum area. Those are the general areas where Ward 6 is located.
When you move through Ward 6 and talking to people in Ward 6, what is the key concern that you're hearing coming from your constituency?
Infrastructure, water, water quality, water pressure, environmental concerns, traffic, transportation and connectivity. Those are some of the main concerns. There will always be the tax, the tax talk, you know, everybody wants to make sure that the taxes are being kept low, but is the water, the water issues that are?
What's your overall thoughts about the way the City of Fort Myers has handled the pandemic in terms of the government?
You know, we, I felt that we took too long to react. You know, I don't think that we all realized how serious this issue was. So I think the city took a little?
Still is.
It still is.
Don't go past tense.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So I don't think that we realized how serious this issue is. And so at the beginning, we just kind of locked down and we're just keeping to ourselves. But that would have been the opportunity to do a lot of the education and we waited forever until, you know, we had this discussion at council to make it an educational opportunity when we could have done this, you know, since March.
A lot of businesses are closing down now.
It's so sad and it's so hard for the people that work for those businesses and those businesses closing.
Jobs are being lost.
Oh, yes. And people will lose their homes. There are people that do not have food on the table. And here's one of the things that I've done, running for council, I have to do something and give back to the community. So I've been doing meet and greets and food drives so we can benefit the feedback because we have to really do something meaningful to help the situations that we have going on.
What do you think about the children going back to school? How should that be handled? Are you happy with what you're reading and hearing about the process?
Well, you know, I have had the talk with so many of my friends that have children that are school age. If my son was in school, he's older now, but if he was in school, I really wouldn't know how to handle it. Now, some kids are choosing to go back because their social interaction is so important for their development and their parents are understanding of that. But some other people are doing it because they have to do it. They might not be necessarily happy to do it, but what are their choices? They have to go to work. They can't leave their kids at home. So that's a very difficult situation, you know, how parents are handling that is very delicate. And I think it comes back to that personal responsibility, that social responsibility and how do you feel in your home, how do you feel with your child going back and taking that responsibility because now is the whole family that could potentially be affected.
There are many who think that the East Fort Myers, part of the City of Fort Myers, that would be like Ward 1, Ward 2, Donbar, East Fort Myers kind of areas, they feel that they are constantly being neglected and overlooked in terms of development and opportunity and that all the money is being kept in the ritzy wards and so on and so forth. I'm sure you've heard that. What's your thoughts about that and how would you go about changing that?
Well, you know, I have said this before, we, the city has grown since the last census almost, I mean, we probably have what, 20,000 more people in the City of Fort Myers since the last census or probably more than that. I believe that we have to really look at our census that's coming out this year. That's why it's so important for people to answer the census because we, I believe we have to redistrict the city, but we also have to be looking at if we're going to put resources, infrastructure, very simple things, we have to do this equitable for the entire city. We can't favor one area more than another. And I think it takes for us as council to come together when we have initiatives to benefit certain areas of the city to make sure that we're not neglecting other areas. And that's, and that can be done through a strategic plan, which the city hasn't had in over 10 years. It has to involve the community and it has to, it has to involve the workforce of the City of Fort Myers who are providing the services to the residents. So there is a whole dynamic there that we haven't addressed.
Would you describe yourself as a liberal, conservative or moderate?
I'm very moderate. I would consider that.
What distinguishes you from your opponents?
Well?
Your good looks?
Well, that too, my smile. I'm dynamic. I am super excited about bringing change and doing exciting things for the city. I'm bilingual, a Latina. My background, as I mentioned, my education, my experience as a former city employee, I have over 20 years of experience in the public and private sector and I feel like I have what it takes to do it. I felt that I had the tool belt ready and I was ready to go to launch myself into running for city council.
Does racism still exist in Fort Myers?
Oh, yes, definitely. I have, you know, I never talk about this as a Latina because I feel like I blend because I just talk to anybody. I am happy to speak with people and I don't see myself different than anybody else, but I have experienced a little bit of that running for city council, which it may be really sad at the beginning that I had to face that, but then I had to comprehend that that's the reality that we live and that here's the opportunity to turn that around.
All right, so you had to run for city council to experience that you're not white?
No, no, no. I had, the experience was having that connection with people. Now, so here's something that's unique about Ward 6. They're all gated communities. So going to a gated community as a guest or walk in, in any of the gated communities and try to knock on a door and then you are standing there as a Latina. I took my son in one of the canvassing experiences and he said to me, I feel very uncomfortable. And I was almost in tears, but I had to stay strong for him. So it's not that it took for me to run for city council. I think I had to, I have always been pushing through to get things done and I will, I don't let those things bog me down, but I experienced that a lot closer than I wanted to.
As a Latino, you still feel and confident that you're going to win this race?
Oh, I know I am. I know I'm going to the general elections in November. I can tell you that. I can feel it.
Okay, well, it's been a pleasure having you on the show. I want to give you 30 seconds, about 30 seconds to look into this camera and appeal to the citizens, Ward 6, nonpartisan race, to support your campaign and to vote for you.
All right, well, I am Diana Giraldo, your next councilwoman for City of Fort Myers, Ward 6. I'm dynamic. I have over 20 years of experience in the public and private sector. I'm a former city employee. I have the education, the background, the skills and the leadership that we need for city council and I will be the first Latina ever to run and obtain the city council for the City of Fort Myers. So Diana Giraldo, City of Fort Myers, Ward 6.
Diana Giraldo, so been a pleasure to have you on the show. Much, much luck with your campaign. I see you as a breath of sunshine and would make a great city councilperson.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you having me here, Lee.
All right, it's been my pleasure. It's been my pleasure. As the saying goes on this particular show, for those who say it can't be done, it's usually interrupted by those like candidate Geraldo, I don't want to mess that up, who are doing it. Stay tuned to Lee Pitts Live as we continue to press ahead throughout this campaign, the general and the primary. Lee Pitts Live, central for politics in Southwest Florida. We'll see you.
Lee Pitts Live is a Lee Pitts Enterprise production.
Hello, Southwest Florida. Thanks for watching Lee Pitts Live. Of course, I'm Lee Pitts. I hope you enjoy that particular show. But you can always catch us here on YouTube. Just click on the subscribe button down there. That way you can get your Lee Pitts Live on demand when you want it and how you want it. We also encourage you to watch our show on Fox 4 and connect with us on all, all our social media platform. Just type in Lee Pitts Live.